Call to order of the town council meeting for October 5th, 2022 for the town of New Windsor. If everyone would rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something placed on the agenda for council review and discussion should have had it to the town hall the previous Wednesday by 3 o'clock. Anyone wishing to speak today, we have a sign up sheet over here. Approval of minutes from the September 7th, 2022 town council meeting. Dana sent them out to everybody. Do I hear a motion for approval or amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 7th.
I'll second that.
And we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the September 7th, 2022 meeting, town council meeting. All those in favor saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, so carry. Mayor's report. Finally got it to Will. While he's doing that, I think this will be echoed and echoed and echoed for Musical on the Main. There's so many thank yous to go around. It was kind of a rush, quick experience. Could have been handled a little better on my end, but overall with the fire department, we greatly appreciate your willingness to open your doors, move the equipment, and tolerate us for a day. I think we have a good relationship, so that's possible. That's not in every community. And I mentioned this at the Musical on the Main. Our town staff did an unbelievable job within about a 36-hour period. We had to decide a lot of things on the fly. Originally, we were going to wait until 6 o'clock Friday evening. However, the logistics just didn't work out due to the fact that we had to let the tent company know where we wanted the tents by Thursday so they could put them up Friday. So we had to make that decision. And we also had to get approval from the fire department to put the tents up because apparatus had to be turned around and then taken out on Saturday. So Chief Welker greatly appreciate your willingness to help make it a huge success. Town staff was out. I don't know how many hours they put into this event, but I know they were up early Thursday planning, designing the vendor areas and everything, making it work. Was it tight quarters? Yes. Did it work? Yes. A lot better than what I thought. Because I was on the verge of just saying, you know, it's not going to work. But it did work. There's, I think, room for improvement, but hopefully we're back on the 200 block of Main Street next year. Again, I want to thank the staff, council members, to make all this possible. Residents, the fire department, Strawbridge, United Methodist Church, the New Windsor Fire Department again for the pit beef, turkey, and ham, you know, rec council for the funnel cakes. And even though it wasn't a great day for the snow cone, I think they did okay. So, you know, it just, it worked out. We had, we didn't cancel it, which, you know, I was extremely proud of. I didn't want to, but I thought maybe that might have been the best option. But, you know, grateful, mainly because everybody's put so much effort into it and so much time. We didn't want to cancel it, so we kept it going. And that's part, most of my music report is Musical on the Main. But I also submitted a $7.8 million for fiscal budget request for fiscal year '24 with the state of Maryland through Budget and Management Secretary David Brinkley. He responded back that he's submitted to his team. However, the general budget, general fund budget with the state really doesn't support transportation, transportation funding a lot. However, there's other avenues, so I'm waiting for him to get back to me on that. And that's for the Streetscape project for State Highway Administration to do the job the way I feel, and hopefully the council supports, the way it should be done instead of just halfway project. So estimated with $7.8 million, and it will be up to the next administration to decide whether or not that would be approved. But maybe, you know, I have, have a, my email follow-up with Secretary David Brinkley was, you know, should I be talking to the next Secretary of Transportation as soon as possible? So whenever he is appointed, probably in January, I will be reaching out to him and maybe have a, have a tour here in New Windsor. Can't hurt. I think it helps when the funding sources sees firsthand the issues rather than writing it. So that's pretty much my report. But a huge thank you to everybody that participated in putting on Musical on the Main. So that's my report. Any questions or comments? All right. Community enhancement, Councilwoman Griffin Lindeman.
Aye. Good evening, everybody. And well, the first paragraph of my report too is to thank everybody that made Musical on the Main possible because, yes, we were all scribbling a little bit, and it came together, and it couldn't have done that without the collective work of, you know, everybody on the staff and the fire department and all the people involved. And it's just so many people, and it's heartwarming to see it all come together like that. So, but I will read the second paragraph here because we didn't quite mention these folks. The event began with the stirring rendition of the National Anthem sung by FSK student Helena Krukschank and ended with the Rousing Tunes by the Learned Doctors. And in all, it was a great event, and a thousand thank yous go out to all who made this day happen. So I really mean that with all my heart. And my next item is the Hometown Hero banners. And I've spoken with the representative at the company, and there were two banners that still needed some attention, and so they're in the process of being printed right now. So they should be mailed out within the next week or so, and we'll have them up by Veterans Day. And I don't want to steal Master Deputy Kalusi's thunder, but we were going to have a drug drop-off area at Musical on the Main, and it was switched. So I'm just going to go, is it okay if I go ahead and read that? Okay. So Master Deputy Brian Kalusi will be hosting a Drug Give Back Day on Saturday, October 29th, and it will take place in conjunction with the Shred Day at New Windsor State Bank. And it'll be in the NWSB parking lot from 9:00 to 12:00, and only pills will be accepted, no liquids, hypodermic needles, or inhalers. So that's my whole report unless there's any questions.
Thank you.
Sure.
Public Works, Councilman Huffman.
Good evening, everyone. As typical, Public Works has been busy. They've continued through the end of the summer here to keep up with the mowing and other necessary tasks, including filling some of the potholes throughout town. They have prepared and are ready to start fall maintenance and those associated duties. Please see the newsletter that should be out soon for the leaf pickup schedule. Additionally, Public Works has been meeting with contractors and are finalizing the recommendations for the gazebo park painting and Alliance Club retaining wall. Council, look for discussions and decision at the October work session meeting on those two items. Josh Small, a Public Works employee, has left town employment for other opportunities. There is currently a job advertisement out to replace Josh. We appreciate all the work that Josh did for the town, and we wish him well in his new endeavor. I also want to put out a public shout-out to both Alan and Josh, who were at Musical on the Main Saturday morning and did a lot of work. Josh came back and did that after, even after his employment had ended. He had come back and helped us there. So appreciate that, all the work that Josh did, and we wish him well. The Planning Commission, we did meet in September. We had a very productive meeting, continuing to revise the comprehensive plan. Town manager Di provided the council a copy of the town vision statement that's found in the comprehensive plan at the September council meeting. I would like to discuss this statement at the October work session, so I would appreciate it if you'd all take a few moments before the meeting to review that statement. And the Planning Commission's next scheduled meeting is October 24th. Thank you.
And the two projects, the Main Street gazebo repair and the retaining wall, how are they being funded?
They're being funded through Project Open Space, and I think both of those are being funded through there. It's not, it's portion of town money, but mostly came through those sources.
And if you're not familiar with Program Open Space, POS, the town pays 5% of the project. The county pays 5% of the project, and the state picks up the rest. So just to let you know that just because you hear projects doesn't mean that it's all tax dollar money. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question for, and I don't know, Councilman Huffman, if this would be you or Wayne, but I got an email from a resident who had seen something posted on the, I'm looking at it right now. It's the ChesapeakeNetwork.org website, and it's Dickinson Run Stream Cleanup, which is up in Atlee Ridge. And it's on November 5th. Does the town know anything about this?
We have one out here.
Okay.
Kim, this is Gary. Yeah, I have that on the agenda and on the radio. I'm going to mention it as well.
All right. Well, I don't think that person is watching tonight, but I'll let her know as she can watch the meeting and then find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Water and Sewer, Councilman Hall.
So luckily, one of the few months that we have not issues to report, which is always good news. And another bit of good news, I think it's been either two or three years since Director Myers has been able to take a vacation and not been called back on a major issue. So that's always good news that he gets a little bit of time to relax because most of the year he's spent really working hard on a lot of our water sewer issues, day, night, you know, overnight, weekends, all the time. He's always working. So in other news, another thing that Director Myers and I were starting to discuss was possible additional water sources. I know we talked about this last meeting. We're just still going over possible water sources for the town in the future. So we got a couple sites planned out. We've been working with the county with that. So we'll have more updates as they come, but we're still working on trying to find those sources and see if they're viable for a long-term water source for the future.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Public Safety, Councilman Cornick.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Don't have an extensive report tonight, but I do want to keep, make people aware. I know there have been some communications with residents in town about the recent rash of, I guess, break-ins to outbuildings on garages in town, specifically Old Town New Windsor. So I just wanted to make sure that that was still at the forefront. If you haven't heard about it and you have experienced any kind of vandalism to any of your outbuildings, please report that. Make sure that you report it to our sheriff's department just so that we can keep track of that, or the sheriff's department can keep track of that and make everybody aware of it. I do know that Deputy Kalusi has been, is certainly aware of it and has been keeping track of those things. Second and not least, I know that the ongoing traffic concerns with speed, specifically in the preserves, or reserves, I actually ride through occasionally. I saw that someone put up a blinking sign on the speed limit sign, which I think is great. I mean, it's kind of in line with what I've been kind of doing as a little project of myself, my own, just kind of riding through different communities to see what they do to deal with, you know, issues of speed. Some of the things that we're aware of, or that I've been aware of, is there's a place in Frederick off of Route 15 where the entire shopping center uses solar-powered blinking traffic signs, even around the speed limit signs. And I was there at night and saw it, and I thought it was great, but I also thought, man, it's probably not going to bring a whole lot of attention during the day. Just this week, the mayor was kind enough to send me over some information on rapid flashing solar-powered lights, solar-powered traffic signs as well. The company is called SaySo, the SaySo Corporation, and they have multiple sister companies that they work with for, just for that purpose, flashing speed lights or speed signs. So I know it's not going to solve it. I think this is a national problem that we're dealing with. Everywhere I visit, everybody seems to drive excessively fast. So, you know, I just want you to know that I'm looking into it, and then we'll try to work on some things that maybe we can get a sign specifically for that, you know, for your community and test it out and see how it works, you know. But I just wanted to, if you need more information, I'd be happy to give it to you. But there are places that use them. And again, obviously, those, these particular ones work better at night because you can see them, and they're flashing, and they are effective. But, you know, we'll see what we can do with additional stuff. So that's all I really have. Thank you.
Touch on that for a second?
Go ahead.
I have a contact, Chris Monche from the county. I don't think that the, with the flashiness, I don't think that they meet Maryland DOT standards, so they won't be enforceable.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. So I'll check on that before you do anything.
Yeah, I mean, at least for, at least for the town per se, that maybe we won't jump right into it. But I was thinking with the reserve, maybe we could use it as a pilot program just because you all kind of have your own, you know, management of the speed there. So I'd be glad to do some more research on that because the places, I mean, like I said, the place in Frederick, I don't know the name of the shopping center, but they have them all in that shopping center. So, and I know I saw them. I want to say I was somewhere this past week. I apologize for not remembering what town it was, but I was kind of surprised to see that they had solar-powered flashing lights as well. So, and it was...
They have them in Mountain Area. I've seen them there.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, we'll, you know, if they're up and I'm seeing them, then, you know, there's a will, there's a way. So we'll try to figure that out. But I just wanted you to know, Mr. Carlson, you mentioned it a couple meetings ago, that we are aware of it, so.
I think in the reserve, it's a slightly different issue in that we have a private, it's a private road.
Correct.
Yeah.
You can do, yeah.
We can do it if you want to.
Yeah. So let me, I'll forward you the information, and I'll do some more. What I can do is if I get back up, when I get back up to Frederick, I'll reach out to their, whatever their business office is for that shopping center and find out where, who their supplier is and see if I can get you more information. All right?
Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz.
I'm going to join the chorus of everybody thanking the, mostly the staff, but all of us worked hard. And I'm just going to share a little anecdote. I had somebody come up to me who lives in another community in Carroll County, and I guess things don't always go smoothly there, where sometimes people don't get along. And this person asked me, how come things always seem to run so well in New Windsor? I said, well, if you go on social media, I'm not sure that you would find everybody agreeing with that. But I do think that, not that we all agree all the time, but we do have a shared belief in doing the best for our community, and we pull together staff, council, residents to make things happen. So I think that we're lucky to live in a place where most people feel that way. So I just wanted to throw that in there. And I walked around at Musical on the Main and talked to every single vendor. And there was one person who wasn't doing well, but everyone else, and he had kind of an unusual product, so I understood why that was a little hard. But anyways, everybody else was doing really, really well. Most of the food vendors ran out of food or came close to running out of food. So I think we could say when we run out of food and some beer, that it was a good success. So that's, that was, thanks to everybody. Other economic development on my report, the Carroll County Downtown's group is going to meet next week, and we're going to start planning for the small business shopping passport and get the local businesses involved in that. If anybody has, the shopping passport encourages people to, what they call shop small, and it starts the day after Good Black Friday, so it's Small Business Saturday. And it used to only run for a week, but they're talking about running it for about a month now. And people go in with a passport, and it gets, you know, initialed or whatever, and then we have cash prizes. And it doesn't cost the businesses a penny. So it's a great program. It's funded by tourism. There's, this is the town's 225th anniversary, if you didn't already see our wonderful signs. And New Windsor Heritage does have a contest on its Facebook page and website with trivia questions, which the mayor cannot take.
I think I'd need to file a complaint.
But if anybody thinks they know a little bit about the town history, I would invite you to take it. We will be posting the answers later this year. I also wanted to just remind everybody, I got my water bill today, so I'm assuming that other folks are getting theirs, that the Human Services Program of Carroll County has funding to help people who can't pay their bill, and they also have funding for other utilities, so electricity and heat. And I talked to the director again today just to make sure that they still had money. He said they did. And he said the best thing for folks to do would be to contact them directly. So I'm going to have either Colleen or maybe Dana put the contact information just as a reminder on the website and Facebook. And just again, support our small businesses. We only have a few in town, but they need our support, so.
And one, I'm not sure if you're familiar, but the Bay, 100.7 the Bay, has the Bay Burger Week.
Yes, I saw it.
Uncle Matty's Eatery is part of that. I had a 10-ounce burger tonight. Took, my wife took a picture of it, and it will be posted on Facebook, and you have the opportunity then to be in a drawing for, I think it's a $1,000 prize of probably gift certificates and other items. But it also helps recognize Uncle Matty's Eatery, and he, he's going to run out of rolls tomorrow, I think. But the phone has been ringing off the hook. People have been wanting to know about this burger. So, you know, do what you can. $7.99, you can't beat it. So, and it's a burger.
That's a big burger.
But I think it's pretty neat that, you know, our local restaurant here is getting recognized pretty big time. So people from Baltimore wanting to know about this burger. So, and as he said, you know, if they can come out of Baltimore, spend the money here instead of Baltimore, more the merrier. So, thank you, Kim. Also, when someone asks you how, you know, we get along and everything, just say quality management. But that's the whole team.
There's a lot of managing up that goes on, too.
It's a whole lot of people, but it's quality management.
That's right.
Speaking of quality management, Town Manager, you're on.
Please segue. Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so Councilman Huffman mentioned this earlier, Josh. Small left employment with the town to pursue a different, a little bit different career. Like he said, his last day was helping out with Musical on the Main, so that was greatly appreciated. The position is posted on several locations. Resumes, applications, and cover letter are due October 26th by 3:00 p.m. This is a full-time, 40-hour-per-week entry-level position, starting hourly rate $1,675, and there is a benefit package available. So just a little advertising clip there for that vacant position. The Dealm and Inn Foundation Restoration Project is nearing completion. It should be done in about another two weeks. Part of the site has been graded, seeded, and mulched, and with all this rain, the grass is coming up real nice. Stan Bowles installed the concrete sidewalk from Sporline Road to the new stamped concrete at the corner of Dealm and Inn. That's turned out really nice. And the last invoice submitted has been approved, and it will be paid. There'll be one more final invoice yet to come, and the project is under the total grant, the total of the two grant amounts of $750,000. And I'll provide final numbers upon completion of the project. The, Kim, this is what you were referring to earlier, the Carroll County Bureau of Resource Management Stream Cleanup. A resource management has coordinated a stream cleanup project in New Windsor. The date, Saturday, November 5th, from 9:00 to 12:00. The location I originally reported was incorrect at the last meeting. The stream cleanup is on Dickinson Run, but as Kim mentioned, the location's in the area of the Atlee Ridge Butterfly Trail. The meeting location is the Atlee Ridge Pump Station across the street from 3195 Atlee Ridge Road. Volunteers are needed. Gloves and bags will be provided, and appropriate footwear is recommended. This is posted on the Alliance from the Chesapeake Bay website, and the link is posted on the town website under Links of Interest, and the link will also be posted on the town Facebook page now and up until November, and volunteers can sign up via the link. So what else? Frank G. Schaefer, Memorial 5K Run Walk for 2022 is coming up in a couple weeks, Saturday, October 22nd, 9:00 a.m., Wakefield Valley Park. There's still time to register up until October 20th at 11:59 p.m. As of today, we have 46 participants signed up so far. Lastly on my list is the Alliance Club Trash Receptibles. I wanted to keep this on the agenda. We last discussed at the September 7th council meeting, Mike Reynolds, our circuit rider, looked into new receptacles and liners. The direction at the September council meeting was to check if the new liners that we selected would fit the old existing receptacles and only order two new receptacles and 12 new liners to cut back on costs. The dimensions of the new liners that we had picked out are smaller than the opening of the existing receptacles, which would create a problem with the trash, all the trash not getting into the liner. The site Mike found did not have larger liners to properly fit the existing receptacles. Ideally, we would like to replace all 12, get 12 new cans and liners. Couple options. The town could possibly split the cost with Alliance Club. We could pay the full amount. We'll continue to look if we want to do that. Clerk Treasurer Mangus and myself have looked at the budget, and we have a few options to pay for this investment. The information that we had for the can and the liner together comes to $331.35 per can, and if you'd get, would get 12 of those, it's $3,976.20. So what's the council's thoughts on that?
Well, since, you know, there's two of us here with the Alliance Club, I think we probably might as well go ahead and purchase them with the hope that the Alliance Club would either purchase them later or, you know, split the, split the cost. I can't speak on behalf of the Alliance Club, and Councilman Hall can either, but we can bring it up at the next, Alliance Club meeting next Wednesday and get a final decision on our participation, whether it will be or won't, and how much. But, I mean, we're going to need them. Might as well go ahead and buy them.
Okay. The other council has?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with this, is Councilman Cornick. I agree with that, that plan of action.
We'll put that under New Business for tonight. $3,000.976.20?
Correct, for 12.
It's really comfortable. All right. We'll bring that under New Business for vote.
Okay, great. That's, that's all I have. Other than we have October 17th is work session, and November 2nd is the next council meeting.
And for the 5K, I know you've asked for volunteers. What time do you want everybody showing up to set up?
Probably about 7:00, 7:15. That should be good. We have, Karen Carroll has at least 15 volunteers, possibly 18, and I don't have my list here in front of me, but we have several of the council and staff have volunteered, will be volunteering as well. We should be, we should be good. We can always use more, but we're looking pretty good on that. But I'd say around 7:00, 7:15 Saturday morning.
All right. And Joan is holding up the shirt that I believe Dana, you designed? And it really looks nice. And I believe you mentioned that you had talked to Sharon Schaefer, and she really liked the shirt?
Yes, she really did. Well, I sent her a... Yes, she really did. I sent her a draft of it, yeah.
So, yeah, nice material. Thank you again, Gary. Dana, thank you for doing that. Really nice. Thank you. Gary, the last time, I think you and I talked about the, the grant for Dealm and Inn, with there going to be a reserve, have you been able to talk to Mike, or I can reach out to him, to see whether or not the state will allow us to use that money somewhere else on the property?
I have not. Mike is in, is in New Windsor this week, but he's due, he's due back in, in New Windsor next week, so I can touch base with him on that.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Public Works Director, Wayne On.
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. As Councilman Hall stated, the Public Works Department is actively working on exploring new redundant water sources for the town. We, we know from the experience of the raw water main break last year, that it's important to have multiple sources available, should we need them. So, part of the work that, that Public Works has been completing over the last several weeks is in direct result of that. So, we have tested Hillside Well 2, and we went from 17,000 gallons per day to 34,500 gallons per day, which is a, is a pretty good improvement with some control changes, and we're, we're still pursuing maybe the addition of a newer upgraded pump at Well 1, and a variable frequency drive control, so we can ramp up production there as well. So that would give us a water source that produces 45,000 gallons per day. Currently, we, we use about 90,000 gallons per day, so it would be almost half of, of, of what we would need. And it would also alleviate some of the pressure on our older system. So an update on main spring, the spring is at 8.7 feet, which is a good recovery level. It's the highest that it's been in the last three months, due to us not having much rain. And now it is pumping less, and Hillside has kind of taken over a little bit more, so that's, that's good news. We did order a new pump for our main spring site. This will allow us to control the rate of flow, and potentially, in a drought condition, the recovery would be better. So that is another improvement, in addition to the possibility of creating a drought plan, should we ever have issues with that. We also made some improvements to our denny controls on our Denny's Road well site, and we doubled our gallons per minute there. So that's all I have on the water side of things. On the sewer side of things, one of our wastewater treatment plant SBR tanks sprung a leak before I went on vacation. I was able to call the contractor to have some repairs made, and they repaired the tank free of no charge. And lastly, for public work maintenance, I know we talked about this at a prior council meeting, we were talking about the age of the dump truck, and, you know, purchasing a new one. And unfortunately, the, to order a dump truck through Ford, it, it wouldn't be until October 18th before we could submit an order, and it would take nine months, eight to nine months to get it, and that would just be a cat and chassis, and then we would have to have a dump body, and hoist, and the snow plow equipment installed. So the lead times are really, really far out. I did contact Dodge, and I, I guess I'll probably contact Chevrolet, too, and get some other prices and lead times. But when I had talked to Dodge quite some time ago, they weren't able to give me an exact lead time. So it, it could be quite a while before we would see that new truck. And that's all I have.
Two things, Wayne. Have you checked with the county to see if we could piggyback on a contract for dump trucks that they have? They may be bigger than what we need, but see what they may, may have on a contract.
Yeah, so we, we do piggyback on the, on the county when we make purchases, and then we also have what's called a Sourceball discount. So we would be able to utilize those, those contracts. However, there's just limited vehicles out there. And I, and I did check into a larger truck, but then that opens up, you know, a whole new list of requirements and everything, as far as licensing, and it even inflates the cost quite a bit. So anyway, I, I think, you know, if we keep with like, we have a 450 now, so if we got another 450, or a 4500, it's Chevrolet and Dodge, they use different numbers, but I think, I think that would last us for years to come, and be a, a good-sized truck for us.
Right. And I know the county has all-size trucks, so, you know, I'd, I'd like for you to reach out to them, just see what they might have. Might save a lot of time, and if it was, you know, maybe 1,000 or 2,000 more than what we could get from another dealer independently, might be worth it to have it, rather than wait nine months, especially with the winter coming on. So, if you could reach out to them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll touch base, I'll touch base with county purchasing, and, and see what they say, and then, and then I'll update you.
Right. And I know this is a bigger project, but, and probably long-term, but when I first became mayor, I think in 2010 or 11, I worked with Lehigh to get the town water rights to the quarry. So, I, I think that might be something you might want to look into, and I know it doesn't have to be done, you know, ASAP or anything, but that's, that's a tremendous water source that I think would benefit us for many generations to come.
Yeah, so, in working with the county hydrogeologist, we discussed that option. Some other options were some other locations where there's, there were some high-yield wells, or well potentials, according to some rate studies that were done several years ago. Another option that we're looking at is if we can upgrade the pump at Hillside 1, and put in another control, we could potentially get an increase in our appropriation permit, which is 53,000 gallons a day. And so we could potentially, you know, extract as much as, you know, 60, 65,000 gallons a day. And that's just from our, you know, preliminary work and studies. So, we're very fortunate to have the county working really closely with us, and very fortunate to have such a qualified person. We deal with Zachary Neal, he's the hydrogeologist, and he's been great to work with, and it's been a really good partnership.
Very good. Thank you.
And Wayne, just real quick, the, you, you mentioned the dump truck. In the past, we've, we used backup contractors. Do you know if the, the contractors that we used in the past would be available if needed, if there is an issue with the dump truck, or is there other contractors available?
So, I reached out to the contractor that we've used over the last couple of years, and his business has expanded to a point where he's not able to help us plow. We, we've used Ichabod's Tree Service in the past, and several other individuals. So, we're gonna reach out to them, and ask, ask them if they could help us out. Another option that's on the table, and I think it's something that we should go, go for, is to put out an RFP, and request bids for snow plowing and salt removal. So that's, that's something that we're looking at, and hopefully we can get that out, you know, as soon as next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Community Deputy.
Good evening. The Sheriff's Office between the dates of September 1st to September 30th responded to 52 calls for service within the town limits. Out of those calls for service, only eight required reports, which were the following. On September 6th, at approximately 4:48 PM, deputies responded to the 100 block of Church Street in reference to a violation of a peace order. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the subject was at the location. However, the court order did not state that they could not be there. Deputies contacted the State's Attorney's Office, who wish not to prosecute the case. Case was closed by lack of prosecution. On September 11th, at approximately 3:10 AM, deputies responded to the 200 block of Main Street in reference to a stolen vehicle. Investigation revealed that unknown suspects stole the unlocked vehicle from the driveway, where the keys were still in the vehicle. Case remains open. On September 13th, at approximately 12:48 PM, deputies responded to the 300 block of Main Street in reference to a burglary. Investigation revealed that unknown suspects entered a locked shed. However, nothing was reported stolen. Case remains open. On September 19th, at approximately 9:35 AM, deputies responded to the 2800 block of New Windsor Road in reference to a theft. Investigation revealed that unknown suspects stole an electric, electric wheelchair from the rear porch. Case remains open. On September 20th, at approximately 10:06 AM, deputies responded to the 400 block of High Street in reference to a burglary. Investigation revealed that unknown suspects entered the locked shed and removed items. Case remains open. On September 20th, at approximately 2:30, or 2:23 PM, deputies responded to the 600 block of Main Street in reference to a tampering of a motor vehicle. Investigation revealed that unknown suspects cut a padlock off a semi-truck trailer parked at the location. Nothing was reported, reported stolen. Case remains open. On September 20th, at approximately 7:08 PM, deputies responded to the 3200 block of Atlee Ridge Road in reference to a disorderly subject. Investigation revealed that while the victim was weed-whacking the property line, they observed the property stake to be damaged and laying on the ground. The suspect then approached the victim and began yelling at them regarding the incident. The suspect remained on the property, when asked to leave numerous times by the victim. The suspect then claimed a physical altercation occurred between them and the victim. However, it was later found to be untrue. Due to this, charges were filed against the suspect for trespassing and providing false statements to law enforcement. Case remains open, pending service of paperwork. On September 24th, at approximately 8:19 PM, deputies responded to the Westminster Urgent Care in reference to a possible overdose. Upon arrival, it was determined that an infant from the 100 block of Main Street was showing symptoms of a possible overdose. The infant was then transferred to Carroll Hospital Center by Westminster Medics for further treatment. Case was reviewed with the Carroll County State's Attorney's Office, who wished not to prosecute, since it appeared no criminal intent. It should be noted that the tox, tox reports from the hospital showed that no signs of narcotics were actually in the child system. Child Protective Services were notified of the incident, and case has since been closed. Other notes, it's already been hit on a couple of times tonight, but Human Services Program of Carroll County has requested that anyone needing fuel oil assistance for this winter should apply for those services now, because there might be fund shortages, and also fuel shortages later on, when the demand is high. So if you need assistance, contact Human Services Program, and then also the Drug Take Back. October 29th, 9:00 to 12:00, New Windsor State Bank Parking Lot, or NWSB Bank, I'm sorry, which will be during the Shred Day event. Again, only accepting prescriptions in the pill form, no inhalers, no liquids, or no hypodermic needles will be accepted. Other than that, that's all I got.
What's the date and time again?
29th, from 9:00 to 12:00. As soon as I make up some flyers, I'll get it out there.
All right, very good. Any leads on the miscellaneous break-ins?
Unfortunately, at this point in time, no. So, we're still looking into stuff, but as of right now, no. I'm thinking the stolen truck had something to do with it, but we'll see.
And I, I have a lock for you. I don't think, I don't think you can get any fingerprints off of it, but just, just a recommendation, if you have a shed that's locked up, do not use a combination lock. Use a regular padlock.
And if you use a padlock, you know, make sure it's not able to be cut very easily, because that was the other issue.
I'll explain combination lock later, if you'd like, so.
Yeah. With that, we normally take the locks, just so that we can see if we ever find.
Somebody else? All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nothing on West Carroll Rec Council? You know how they did Saturday?
I did speak with them after the musical on the main, and they did very well. They were very pleased with their efforts, and, and the results of their efforts. So, I would say very well.
I think the cool weather helped them.
Yeah. I think the sugar helped them.
Okay. Fire Chief, Chief Welfer?
Good evening. Falls from month September, 31 fire calls, 63 EMS calls. Brings us here to date, 254 fire calls and 736 EMS calls. If you drop by the station, you'll notice we have changed our exterior lights to red. This is to help honor those firefighters who have made supreme sacrifice while serving others, and have died in the line of duty. Red lights at the station will remain in place through the night of October 9th, to help memorialize and remember those who died in the line of duty. The Fire Department encourages all residents to help light the night red, and remember those who have died in the line of duty while serving others. On that note, also, the week of November 9th through the 15th is Fire Prevention Week. This year's theme is Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape. Just like your kids do in school, practice fire drills in your home, have multiple escape routes, and plan a meeting place outside. Fire safety is important year-round. Don't just make it a one-week thing. Shameless self-promotion, the Fire Department Auxiliary is holding Big Money Bingo on Saturday, September 12th, at the Social Hall Windsor Station.
When?
September 12th. Or, November 12th.
Okay.
I have it written right, set it wrong.
All right.
That includes fried chicken dinner and drinks, with doors opening at 4:30. Bingo starts at 6:45. Tickets available in advance for $60 at the door, $70. See our website for contact info. Large jackpot game, $1,500. Small jackpot, $600. Specials, $300, and regular games are $200.
And Byron, just for the public information, and we have a couple auxiliary members here, name, or can you tell us some of the donations that they have made to the Fire Department in the past years?
They have made significant donations in the five figures almost every year. So the auxiliary goes to great lengths. Catering events, having fundraisers of their own, helping out at our carnival, and other events, and, and helping out with our events. So, and, and from the money they earn, they make very generous donations to the Fire Department on a regular basis. So, without them, we wouldn't be where we're at.
Exactly. So, come out and support the auxiliary, as well as the Fire Department. Thank you, Chief. Treasurers report, Dana?
Nothing to report at this time.
Nothing to report? No news is good news, then, huh? Water and sewer billing clerk. Colina?
Hello, howdy. Hi, well, would you be able to put my report up?
Yes.
How is everybody this evening?
All right, you?
Very well.
Hi. Water sewer bills are completed. Emailed ones did go out today. Ones that are mailed are going out tomorrow, as well as newsletters. So, we are looking into a mass texting system. I have about a few websites that I have researched for pricing, so I kind of broke it down a little bit. Textedly, so for, this is monthly. If we do, let's say, 2,400 text messages per month, would be $39. As you can see, if for more, it's $50. And then it's 300 characters per text. If, go to the next one, this one's a, one of the Pay As You Go plans. You pay per credit. This one gets a little confusing. It's a 160-character outbound text message. However, if you wanted a longer text message with more characters, it would be two credits per phone number. Cost per credit is .09 cents for 100 to 2499, or 2,499 text, and then so on and so forth. or two thousand four hundred ninety-nine text and then so on and so forth. Um monthly cost is a little bit more, but there's unlimited text per month. Um slick text, seventy-nine dollars a month for two thousand texts per month, um but if you like, if we have um so many residents and we send out two texts per month, then that would be, you know, if we have a hundred subscribers and we send out two texts, it would be two thousand texts per month. Um also, um we're also looking at an automated um uh email um mass system, so that's where MailChimp kind of comes in. Um that one's fifteen hundred contacts, um fifteen nine fifty-nine dollars a month. And then you can send up to thirty thousand emails, which we probably would never get that close. Um but MailChimp pairs with textily and slick text. Um the best option I found for this whole system is click send. Um so it's a hundred and sixty characters per text, which I kind of did a a test about that, it's it's enough characters to be able to get something out if we need to. Um unlimited outbound text messages or um we can send, you know, unlimited text messages. Um so if we send under two thousand messages, it's point two two four cents. Um theme is email is pay as you go. Um because I don't I do, if we do this, I don't think we would have a set amount of texts or emails we want to send out on a monthly thing. Um this would be for, you know, alerting residents about water sewer issues or any or yard waste changes or anything like that, so those, these are some options that I came across. And.
Kalina, if I if I could just uh say, I I remember with the last uh water main break, uh we worked exclusively with the extensively, I should say, with the the county and the emergency operation building, which obviously um is almost right next door. Um they came over and they actually have a uh te- text messaging system that they have set up in countywide, it's an opt-in system, so people, residents would have to um reach out to them, they have a website, you could sign up. But if there was ever any emergency issue like a water main break, sewer main break, or any anything we've got to get out soon, that's all free for us. Now, that wouldn't cover any if we wanted to send like, hey, yard waste is uh gonna be next Thursday or something. Um but that might be an option for at least the bulk of uh the need for that, I don't know if you if you're thinking about um using text messages to send out like bill reminders or not, or um if that's on the roadmap.
It possibly could be down the road that I we've never really discussed anything about that yet. Um I have reached out to Valerie um Hawkins.
Yes.
And yes, so I she hasn't gotten back to me yet, so I haven't been um you know, been able to see where her.
They also have a, they have a system, I believe, I'm not, I can't remember what it was, um yeah, that you can do a map, I believe, of the town itself.
That was the coolest part about it because uh when they came here, they actually were mapping it out and you can go straight down to the street, if it's only like five houses that are affected, they can call just those five people.
Right.
Um it was it was a really cool system, it looks like a lot of work's been put into it and and it it's free, so it's all the better. But that is an opt-in system, so a lot of uh residents will have to um uh sign up to get those messages, it's uh there's email, there's text messages, and then there's a phone call, anyone you can sign up for. And I can try to get you that information as well, Kalina.
Yeah, that's totally fine, um I'll reach out, I have to, I emailed Valerie last week, but she was on vacation. Oh and um so I reached out to her again, but I haven't heard anything, so we'll find out. We'll get some more information from her, but this is just, you know, just something to think about.
All right, good job, thank you. All right, code enforcement officer, and we'll introduce Joan Henner.
Hello, everyone, um I'm the new code enforcement officer, um I've been here for a little over a month. Um so my report just is basically saying for the month that I've been here, I've done a lot of patrolling and um learning the jurisdiction in the areas where um I can enforce the ordinances at. Um I've noticed the most prominent issue is the amount of cargo trailers, travel trailers, pop-up trailers of all sorts um that are in the Atlee Ridge community, um so I'm taking a look into getting them back off of the streets and on private property. Um there's also a number of abandoned vehicles um in 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 the statute, it basically says that an abandoned vehicle is something that's been left um does isn't our daily runner doesn't run on a daily basis, um so I've been looking into that as well. Um a lot of my time spent so far has been administrative work, so I'm trying to learn uh the reports and go through some old stuff that the old code enforcement um officer left prior to me. Um I've had a very difficult time finding out renters' information on property that that's owned by someone else that doesn't live there. Um so I've I've looked in the charter and I've contemplated um re-implementing or reinforcing the rental property application process which will have every property owner um within New Windsor has to register their rental property as a rental property, giving the town access to the property owner's name as well as the renter's name and information. Um so I'm looking into reading, I'm reading a lot and I'm learning a lot, um and that's kind of where I'm at right now. So if anybody has any input or questions or anything, um I'm all ears.
There's either ordinance or code, and Michelle can maybe weigh in on this, but we did this many years ago, seems like many years ago now, where the landlords were to uh have all the information, emergency contact information.
Yeah, I found the old forms, but it doesn't, um Kalina told me that, yeah, it wasn't being enforced, so I was looking into it. Just because it's been so difficult for me to find, like I can go on the property website and find out the owner of a property, but that doesn't mean that that person lives there, that the last person that you thought lived there lives there anymore, um so.
Do you use S-Stat?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and all the mapping and stuff, um so I'm familiar with that just from my prior law enforcement time, um that was a huge help, so I've been doing that, I'm trying to look up addresses and people and so I've been doing a lot, although it doesn't look like it down on the street yet.
Michelle, did you want to weigh in?
Just a little bit, Mr. Mayor, the I don't believe at least last time I looked at this, which was a few years ago, I'll confess that we can ask for the tenants' names. But even having just the landlord's name and as importantly, if they're out of town landlords of contact information is why we established this in the first place, the rental housing law. If it's not being addressed, then obviously that's something we have to take off the back burner and and get back to work on.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I remember when we passed this and the point was so that we would have that, it was mostly for emergencies, but it obviously comes in handy for what the kind of work you're trying to do too, so yeah, we need to get that, thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
No problem, I was just, you know, I was coming up to my own struggle and I was reading, so I learned something.
Very good, thank you, nice to have you on board.
Say that again?
If you don't ask the renter their name, how do you send them a newsletter?
Are the letters addressed?
Yeah, and and we may not send them to everybody.
Yeah.
Unless they request. Could they move in, move out? That's that's up on the renter.
Answer that.
Go ahead.
Um so yes, we do have, some tenants have come to me and they give me the address and um you know, I send them the newsletter, but there is a particular landlord that owns several properties, I have no idea who their tenants are, so they don't get the newsletter.
All right, thank you again. Lehigh update, um just a couple of things, they had two tours uh Saturday of the quarry. I know one bus wasn't, didn't have a lot of one, but at least some people got to see the the new quarry again. Um and then also, we did recognize uh Lehigh Hanson Cement Company for their generous donation for the wall up here on the park of twenty thou- twenty-five thousand dollars, so uh Gary, has that plaque been put up yet or still in the process?
It's up.
Okay, great, thank you. Very good.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we could, since we didn't have the opportunity, because the weather was so bad, maybe we could just stage a photo op for that, just take a picture.
Because I know Kent wanted to be here, but he was out of town, so.
Well, do you want me to coordinate that or do you want to do?
I'll get a hold of it.
Yeah, and then we could just put it online.
Yeah, I'll get a hold of Vince and he can take care of that.
Yeah.
He runs with it. New business, we have the trash, the Lions Club trash can claim, yeah, trash can um replacement of twelve trash cans and liners for three thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty cents. Any other discussion, motion to purchase? What are your wishes?
So I I'll say that I I am, I was hopeful that there would be additional um receptacles that were larger, um that would fit the existing ones, because a lot of the old ones are in good shape, the the outer shell of um and that would have saved a lot of money, but i- if if there's no uh receptacle liners that are that size, um it kind of puts us in a hard spot and and at least this is the cheapest of the sites that I know that um the town staff has been looking at. Um and also the most available because as as uh Director Myers was saying about lead times, lead times for everything are are months, years out now, so um these receptacles, I know a lot of work was uh put in to find one that was A affordable and then B um something that could be obtained rather quickly, because uh as many of you know, um Hughes Trash Service has uh started refusing to pick up some of these bins that are excessive weight just because of how much trash has been put in them and the liners are a lot easier to to pull out. Um so it since that's kind of the only option we have at this point, I'll make that motion to uh pay the three thousand
Nine seventy-six twenty.
Nine hundred and seventy-six and twenty cents for the trash receptacles and liners.
We have a motion to purchase twelve trash cans.
I'll second. We'll second.
All right, discussion, uh just a little bit, um I know town staff looked, you know, and looked and looked for liners. I went on probably at least a half dozen sites and couldn't find anything, uh major companies, Lowe's, Home Depot, everybody, even, you know, generic, and I couldn't find any, so um you know, it's not like we we didn't try, staff tried, I looked at it, but just weren't there, so.
And and if I may, I know I had mentioned this earlier when we first had this discussion a month or so ago about them. Um it's important that we have them around town, um they're they are used, there's a lot of trash that go in in them. Um I live right by the post office and the one, they have two of them there, one of them had to be removed because it did not have a liner and people were filling it up with trash and used could not dump it, so they removed it and the uh trash can that is there, I know everybody goes to the the, just about everybody goes to the post office. You you see that trash can is always full, I just about daily pick up trash in the alley that has blown out of that trash can because people just get out of their car and they just dump it in there, so we need those around town, we don't want to have a a trash problem on top of other things, so maybe it's a small cost to pay to to keep our town clean.
I'll add to that too, I mean, I'm walking around town most days in the morning and um well, especially the one in Alliance Club Park, that is always overflowing with trash, so people are definitely using it, and there's two of them there and the one by where their their little shed is, that's always like practically overflowing and the other one is well-used too, so people are using them, so it's a good thing we have them.
It's not park users' trash, it's trash like post office.
Right.
Pull in, had McDonald's bag or whatever, instead of taking it home, you know, it would be nice if it was just for people that are using the park, you know, but so be it, but as you said, if we can keep town clean, I think it's a good investment.
I will say too, uh our family does use it for picnics at the park, so it does get some actual use.
But you're not bringing it from home, you know, so to speak, so, all right, we have a motion in a second to purchase twelve trash cans and liners at a cost of three thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty cents. All those in favor singing, finally singing, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, so carry. Any other new business? Old business, Gary, twenty twenty-two road paving update?
Okay, so the RFP was issued September twenty-first. Uh we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting on September twenty-eighth, we had four contractors uh that attended. Uh the contractors were White Pine Paving, Grandson, C J Miller, and C P E. Uh today was the cutoff for questions and the bids are due October the twelfth. Uh we did have a couple of questions and I'll be issuing an addenda tomorrow morning. Um we're looking to award the bid at the October seventeenth work session. Our highway user revenue balance, I believe, is three hundred and fifty thousand five thirty-eight change. Uh the priority of the roads will depend on the awarded uh bid prices and the number of roads we do. As I mentioned before, will depend on uh how much graded aggregate base, uh the the stone base under the paving is needed. Uh one contractor did, um one of the questions did reach out and express uh concern with being able to get the roads done this paving season, so um I addressed that in the addendum. Uh and we're gonna try to be as flexible as we can, uh possibly with the the with the date uh of December second that I put in the RFP, which was forty-five days from those to proceed. Uh again, it's weather dependent, we could, uh we'd be willing to extend that and also possibly get uh maybe one or two of the roads done this season and then get the remainder done uh in in spring, so we're we're keeping that open, that option open and we'll just have to wait and see how how the bids, how many bids we get and how what the prices come in at.
All right, thank you. Melon thirty-one Water Main Improvement Project Update?
Okay, so we have, we received the S H A utility permit, we had that in hand. We had a meeting on September thirteenth with uh our engineer G M B, town staff, Mayor Rupe, and Councilman Hall to discuss uh specific um project specifics. Um some of the things we discussed were the permission for accessing private property, we're developing a memorandum of understanding. Uh that would be a combination of uh town manager's version and a sample that that was provided by uh G M B on another on another project, uh so we're working on that. Uh we're making the final uh when making the final connections to the new water services. Uh this will involve a town hiring a plumber to connect the existing water service on the private side to the new meter vaults. And then after this work is done, then that same plumber will uh will remove the existing inside meters. The inspection during the construction, uh G M B will be providing a resident project representative as part of their construction management services. Uh however, the town needs to provide provide for day-to-day inspection services. Uh I reached out to five engineering firms requesting proposals for inspection services. Uh two were non-responsive, I've received uh proposals from W B C M and also Century Engineering, and I just got uh the la- a third one uh later today um you know, from Whitman Wright Card and Associates, so I will uh I will put together a uh a comparison of those three uh for uh recommending award at the uh October uh work session. Um I had budgeted uh for inspection services to be ten percent of the construction cost, which is approximately three hundred thousand. So we should be well within that um that range uh with the lowest bid, if that's where we end up, but we'll be doing that at the October um well, work session. And then other items of importance, the project schedule uh from G M B uh is as follows, are gonna be advertising uh here soon in early October, uh the bids will be due thirty Uh, the bids will be due thirty days, which will put us to early November. And then in between, that will be a pre-bid, uh, mandatory pre-bid meeting in the middle of that thirty-day period. We'll have two to three weeks for, uh, bid evaluation and then make recommendation by late November and then, uh, recommend the, recommendation approval of the contractor at the December seventh council meeting, followed by notice to proceed. Actual waterline construction, uh, will more than likely begin sometime in the spring of twenty-twenty-three. Again, depending on material availability, that's the, the X factor in just about anything these days. Um, but the, the contractor will be able to get, uh, get things ordered, get established, set up their trailer, um, and, and start staging and things like that. Uh, we'll also have informational meeting or meetings after award of the contract in the winter, uh, winter season. The meeting will be held at the, more than likely held at the New Windsor Fire Department and attended by, uh, town staff, elected officials, uh, GMB, the engineer, and the contractor. So that's the update on the waterline.
And I'd like to also include, uh, either, uh, Chief Welker or someone from the fire department, just to let everybody know what the process will be when a hydrant is down or something that everybody's gonna be well taken care of. So, uh, just to put everybody at ease so that, uh, we can move forward with this is hopefully without any major issues. But, uh, thank you for your work on that.
Yep.
Any other old business? Residents' concerns. Dick Carlson, President of Condominium Owner Association for the reserves, presentation.
Just somewhere with a microphone.
There you are, Dick. You wanna come up here? So they can hear you.
We're here.
People at home can't.
Oh, okay. And I used to complain about that too. The reserve at New Windsor is a fifty-five-plus community of eighty-three homes. The residents of the community are a giving group and we have had fundraising drives, uh, since we, uh, fully occupied the development. The social committee decided to honor two groups tonight. And the first one is the Carroll County Sheriff's Department. Thanks to Brian and my conversation a while back, um, he mentioned about having stuffed animals available in the cru- in the cruiser to give to children that might be affected by a situation that he reports to. So we decided, the social committee decided to, uh, request residents bring new stuffed animals to the commi- to her garage. Well, I didn't quite expect the response. We now have, or you now have seventy-four bears that you can share with your other deputies and with the fire department and, uh, both at Union Bridge or here, whichever you choose to do.
Do we have bears with us that I can take a picture?
Yes. Oh, my goodness, yes.
Your car is gonna be full.
Everyone individually wrapped.
Why don't you hold one too?
Very nice.
I should say that he saw the bear that I had in my car.
John Cole in the picture too.
Come on, you're one.
No, you're fine.
Okay, go ahead.
Jack does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So you got seventy-four bears. The other honoree is the New Windsor Fire and Hose Company Number One. I think it's the right.
Correct, correct. Thank you.
How did I do that? Well, we asked for checks and cash donations. We're a senior community. You visit us way too often. As recently as this past Monday, as a matter of fact. Anyway, they responded. And we pulled this guy out from the, the group of, uh, teddy bears. And in here, we have checks totaling four thousand.
Richard, can you say the amount again for the minutes? Cause Dana didn't get it.
Four thousand, one hundred and two dollars.
Great.
I would like you to use that as your math slot.
You can go right up front in the firing.
I'm gonna have you off the floor just a little bit there.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
One more.
One more. Brian?
One, two minute anyway.
Ready? Let me just take it again. Okay, great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you all. I need to point out that the social committee at the reserve is comprised of four ladies that really went above and beyond to pull this off. Irene, please stand. Rita. Carlson. Joan Jones. Kay Johnson.
After the meeting.
We can do it later. We can do it later, ladies.
After the meeting.
Do it afterwards?
Yeah.
Dick, if you would, on behalf of the fire department, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office in town, New Windsor, send a thank you out to everybody for their efforts.
I'll do that tonight.
That's what makes New Windsor as strong as it is. Thank you. Other residents' concerns?
Got one. If you wanna just come over here.
Cherry, you're up.
Cherry, yeah.
Union Bridge Councilwoman, Sherry Babington? Oh, I'm Thompson. Sorry. That's old, old times.
That's right. Way, way back. Okay, I'm actually wearing two hats tonight. Counselperson Thompson, as well as co-founder of Dream Big Union Bridge, which is a nonprofit that we have in our town of Union Bridge. And I was going to just drop this off, but then I decided to read it formally. So Town of New Windsor, on behalf of Dream Big Union Bridge and the Union Bridge Gift Shop, which is run and operated by Dream Big Union Bridge, we would like to compliment you on an awesome job you did with the music on the main. There were several challenges and obstacles that you were faced with and you overcame them quickly and efficiently. Your team pulled together and put on a more memorable event. It was especially nice to see how your town council and community worked together. We enjoyed being part of this event. Sincerely, Dream Big Union Bridge.
Oh, thank you.
And on that note, I would love, as a councilperson, at any point, if we could partner up and maybe do some projects together. I don't know if that's still a bore or not. I'm new on the council, so I don't know what's okay and what's not okay. But, you know, I like getting the community involved. I'm all about community and we'd love to work with you guys, cause you guys are really awesome. You're first class act. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sherry. Any other residents' concerns? Anyone? All right. Um, announcements? Um, October twenty-second is the Franklin G Schaefer, uh, five K run and walk memorial. Memorial walk and run. Um, anyone that wants to help, be there at seven, seven fifteen. Uh, and then October twenty-ninth, nine to twelve, at NS, NWSB Bank Drug Drop Off. All right. Um.
And shred day.
And shred day, and shred day. Fire department have anything coming up? Nothing? Okay. Uh, Tuesday night bingo though. Uh, seven to nine, doors open pretty much all afternoon, almost five, five-thirty. So, uh, that's another opportunity to help support the fire department. Um, any other announcements? If not, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I have a motion.
Second? All right, second. We have a motion in the second for adjournment. All those, all those in favor singing, finally saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. So carry. Hey, Will?
Recording.
Oh, no, you went off.
Nope. What, what happened?